Everybody, we get to it. I hear.
Cool.
There we go. All right. Thanks. All right. It's Tiffany.
Before we get started, may I just ask if uh we could record this meeting for the interview sake? Since we have the joint meeting next meeting, uh our voting procedure will take us to the following meeting after that. And so if we could record it for internal use, perhaps it would be nice to review that before we're actually taking the votes.
Not saying one way or the other, but if three of you did go ahead and decides you want to do this, um we are prepared to record it. You'd like to do that, right?
I would greatly appreciate that.
Is there anyone else?
I'm curious, I just have a question. I'm curious that I just wouldn't go on to get into any, any danger areas there where we're making decisions that we are only supposed to be making in uh in council meetings, but like I said, I, I.
I feel comfortable making it's not we're not making decisions as far as council making a decision. It's just me on the logistics of this meeting.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Is there anyone that didn't doesn't want it? We do have three at least. Or maybe.
That doesn't bother me.
Right back on. I think I think it's good to have that information, especially when you're making this decision here. Other than that, is there anything else? Stephanie?
Thank you.
Clarification. I I thought we discussed this recently than we were going to. Is this different than what we had discussed and agreed that we were going to go back to recording this for the purpose of uh of having it recorded?
That was just.
Well, I thought it was just for the applicants.
But what I mean is, but I thought.
You brought it up at a study session and it's never been put on any official agenda for us to vote to go back to anything. So it's still under.
So what you're asking for is to go ahead in this meeting, do what we agreed might be a better plan.
Only I'm not asking to go back on anything. I'm just asking for this meeting just to have it recorded internally so that perhaps we could review it as counselors.
I understand.
Something that would be published or anything like that. Uh and then perhaps at a later date, it could go on an agenda if we're just discussing. And then I believe that that would take a formal vote again to be able to bring it back, actually.
Okay. And I thought what we agreed when we did discuss that, we thought it was it would be appropriate in order for the purpose of of Kathy to to be able to keep track of the meetings as well as council member S to reference in order to ask the questions he he would need to ask at future meetings. But not but that wasn't the same as how we were previously handling it with uh as as we do uh the council meetings.
Yeah. So that was all just.
So we just discussed it, but we never actually.
Exactly.
Well, we recorded audibly. We, what do we do, Kathy?
We don't record it at all. We live stream it so people can watch it live, but we do not record the study sessions.
If council wants to to record and do that, it was more of an informal kind of discussion at that point. If council does want to, we're than happy to to get it going again. Um but you know, council voted to not do that. We'd have to have council to vote to start.
I believe we should because that was the 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 issue was not keeping, you know, recording these these meetings. That wasn't.
I was just gonna say to answer your question, uh Councilwoman Wood, it's uh we were going to have it as part of the discussion during the uh retreat and then bring it back up because we're going to look at the rules, how we want to go about it, what the purposes would be.
And it is on our agenda for the council or for you to discuss. Um I would recommend we discuss it then, have a study session, discuss it publicly again, and then vote on it publicly at the at the council meeting. Cool.
Cool. That's item A, I guess. A one. Um who here is this first time study session? We all been to a study session before? Whatever. Everyone's been to a study session. Okay, cool. Well, my chief. Um so I'm May Pro-Tampe, you didn't know that, but you've been here, you should know that. Uh so we kind of just play kind of loose. Usually when it's round circle last few this year so far, we have been in a round circle talking, uh which is a little more comfortable of a conversation. I was kind of hoping for that today because I like to sit down, talk with people face to face. But not so we're going to go through applicants. You guys are last on the list. So you get a, you have to sit here through the whole meeting. So thank you. And then we'll randomly draw names. Uh one applicant at a time and the rest of you all will go in the back room and get called forward and then we'll go through the interview process. Any questions? Be happy. All right, let's get into it. Community events update. That would be Miss doesn't have a name proper name tag Lynn Roy.
Hello. Um thank you for uh letting me be here tonight to talk about some summer events. Uh for anyone that doesn't know, um I'm Lynn Roy. I'm the communications recreation coordinator here for the city. Um and I am just going to chat about some super cool things that we've got going on. Um summer in Yelm is the best time of the year, especially for the recreation team. Between now and the end of August, we have forty two events scheduled with more still in the works. Um that's forty two events in a hundred and seventeen days or roughly one event every two point seven days. We're doing a great job. Uh we couldn't make this happen without, of course, our incredible partners, um including the Elm Timberland Library Yard, Grand Auto Repair, the Elm Arts Commission, and the Elm Lions Club, among many others. Uh they help and and step in when we want to do an event, but I don't have the manpower bandwidth um supplies to make that happen. Um today, though, I want to highlight some of the events that we have coming up in the next six weeks, including what we've got planned for Prairie Days. Um I promise I won't list all forty two events, so you don't have to scribble furiously in your calendar. Uh but I do invite you to follow us on Facebook at City of Yelm Parks and Recreation. Uh the splash pad opens for the season on May twenty second. That's a date many in Yelm have marked on their calendars. Uh you may see it running earlier as our public services team uh does testing and maintenance. Um the twenty second will also mark the debut of our new wheelchair accessible swing. We will host a Memorial Day celebration on May twenty sixth in the corner of Yelm City Park near the tree and the community garden. Uh in collaboration with the VFW and American Legion, this event will include a presentation of colors, wreath laying, wreath laying ceremony, uh a live rendition of both the National Anthem and taps and moments of reflection. Dinosaur Day is May thirty first. This is part of our steam centered programming, uh science, tech, education, arts, and mathematics. Uh funded by a grant from the Park Foundation, kids can excavate dinosaurs, view real fossils, create dinosaur themed craft and build Lego dinosaurs. Other activities funded by this grant include Galaxy Fest, which happened last weekend. Ice Cream Day is scheduled in August and Pirate Day in September. Uh thanks to our partnership with the Yelm Timberland Library, we're bringing more great programming to the park from Sunshine and Storytime uh for the tiniest little Yelmites to drumming and storytelling with ethnomusicologist Javen Bird to the Reptile Lady and the Prairie Days Magic Show. And now Prairie Days. Uh we're bringing back some community favorites while also introducing some new activities. Um Prairie Days will start on Tuesday, on Thursday, June twelfth with Bingo hosted by the Lions Club. The party will start Friday, June thirteenth with live music from Dakota Poorman, the Olsen Brothers, and Adam Craig on this Yelm Centennial stage, uh plus food trucks and a beer garden. Saturday is family friendly all day long, starting with the Yelm Chamber of Commerce Parade, touch a truck, a chart, a chalk art contest, Kid Zone, Teen Zone Photography Contest and Exhibition, Food Trucks, uh Performance by Standing Room Only, and the Prairie Days Magic Show. We'll wrap up Prairie Days Weekend at Longwire Park with a charity mush ball tournament. That's one of my personal favorites. Teams compete to raise money for the charity of their choice with all proceeds going to the winning team's cause. Um as you can see, summer in Yelm is going to be packed with opportunities to connect, create memories and celebrate everything that makes our community special. Whether you're cooling off at the splash pad, dancing at Prairie Days, or cheering on a mush ball team, we hope you'll join us in making this the best summer yet. Uh follow us again on Facebook at City of Yelm Parks and Recreation to stay in the loop and we will see you up there. Yes, sir.
Yes, uh with all these events, I congratulate you on being so productive with this and what you've accomplished in the past two years. It's good to see this happening. Uh my question is for you and maybe even Director Colt in reference to food trucks and variety of things like that for all these different events. And even for just the weekends, do we have uh areas set up that they can do that? I know that was something discussed a while back at one point of having along the path for in the park, but I was just wondering like around the food trucks around the park and all, do we have anything happening in that realm?
Uh codes right now, and you can um pop in if you you need to, uh codes right now state that um food trucks can only be on on private property unless it's in conjunction with an event. So it would have to be like a set event from, you know, five to seven on Friday or or what have you. Uh they can't just pull up park and start slinging dogs.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Love that. Um question I have, so can you put these events in the email for the city website like we have for agendas and the spring cleanup? We got an email that a day. Uh can these be wrapped up in the email people sign up for so they can be notified because there's a lot of people that aren't on Facebook? And then if you follow Facebook algorithms, you may see it after it happens. Five days later, I've had that happen many a times. So can we uh is there a way to work on the like we do for the important stuff like agendas and stuff?
Yes, I'm sure there is. I'll look into it.
Lynn, what do we have currently? How do we let people know if they're not on Facebook?
Um so some of the things that we do to make sure that people are seeing them, um we have that beautiful reader board by the old city hall. Um we have a great ru- uh relationship with Yelm, um that's called Wally Valley News. Um they share a lot of our events. We do our social media. Um.
Do we have any calendars on our website?
Oh, yes, and our events calendar on our website. I'm so sorry um that most of those events are are up there. There's a couple that are missing. I just haven't plugged all of June in yet. So um it's a ongoing process.
Big fan.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Moving on. I assume road projects is Cody.
Correct. Um so awesome. Our city clerk will get up a map. You have a map in front of you, but this way you guys can see our map as well. Um so our public works team, public services team with Dean Norton at the helm has kind of come up with a list of road projects to tackle this year. Um so you'll see the red outline and I know it's small. If you need your glasses, the big map will be up in a second. Um so the red outline is we're going to do two big things this year. One is we're doing crack sealing. So if you've been down a road where you see they have maybe a crack down the middle of the road and they have that black tar that comes over the top of it, that's what crack sealing is. So it prevents potholes from forming and also extends the life of the road from four to eight years roughly, which is great. So all of this area will be crack sealed immediately after, well shortly after crack sealing, they will go and stripe these roads. So we work with Thurston County and Thurston County will come out and restripe the roads that are highlighted in red here. Um so that those will be, that's this is our goal for twenty twenty five. Um the hope is we can do even more than this, but this is what we kind of set asphalt patch systems. We'll be doing most of our crack sealing and then Thurston County, as you know, does our striping. We just wanted you guys to be aware of this because it'll be happening over the next four to six-ish months until about October, end of October, when it starts getting really wet and we shut these projects down, but there'll be a lot of activity during the summer. Um council, as you know, budgets this money and our street fund, you get this stuff done. So this is where we're at and what we can tackle for the money we have. Just got some updates and you know what's going on.
Unrelated, but similar. Um are we going to be doing sidewalk grinding soon?
Yeah, so um it's a different thing. So we do, yeah, precision concrete is who we use usually to do. They do a diamond blade and grind down edges of sidewalks. They have a, we did, we've done three sections of the city so far and we have one section left to do. Um which I don't remember exactly where that section is, but I have the map in my office. I didn't bring it with me.
Some of them need to be redone.
Yeah, so they'll go back for it and reassess those and we'll switch out panels if we have to. So some of the panels that can be grinded, some get too lopsided and we can't. But if you see a problem sidewalk specifically, definitely report it because if it's a very bad problem, we can get out there and do it quicker. But the grinding will come through probably twice during the summer. It'll hit the last two sections. We'll start all over again. So.
Um Cody, do we do our own painting or do we contract that out?
Um so striping, we we can do our own striping, but.
Not not striping of the roads, but like say if I wanted to paint this building.
We normally contract that out. So we, yeah, our, we have the ability to do painting on a small scale. Um we don't have big machines. We have, you know, old school brushes and rollers. We don't have, no, no sprayers. So we'll do very, like you said, let's do maintenance painting, but we won't hit something big. So if something big needed to be painted, like you wanted to paint this entire building, that would probably go out to bed.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm curious on the sidewalk grinding. Uh I know several years ago, I saw that they were developing the technology to come in and literally pull, pick up the panel, move out the ground, take out the roots or whatever it was, recompact it and put that panel back, saving, saving on re, you know, grinding as well as reporing these these things. Have we, have we heard, is that advanced at all or is that just all the?
Um so I, we, what you're mentioning, we have attempted to do, a company said they pulled panels and the two panels they pulled broke, fell apart when they pulled them. It broke both edges and we had to repay it. Repor it. One sidewalk panel isn't difficult and our guys, our team can do that. So our team can pour a single sidewalk panel, so it's not as big of a deal as it used to be, whereas we didn't have, now we have a streets team, we can pour our own panels. And we did several, um you probably haven't even noticed, but there's probably three or four panels we did in the last couple of months in Yelm. Um and so we are getting more of those. So yes, that technology exists. I don't think it's perfected yet because last time we did it, it didn't work both times.
Okay.
And uh reference to the roads, I just want to get clarification. It's five ten and five oh seven, those have to be done by Wash Dot.
Correct. So.
Walls or anything like that.
Correct. We, they own curb to curb. So anything inside the curb, they control. Um we work with them, so oftentimes like we'll sweep, we'll even do some basic maintenance if they can't get the right way because of the timeframe. Sometimes they have to get, they get to, but they are responsible for pothole filling and you go curb to curb. And then the other part that, um just so you know, because I know there's some potholes that are forming right when you turn onto a city street, they own about ten feet off of the curb onto a new street. So if you like third street right here connects and there may be a pothole right there, right by a drain, that drain is under Was Dot's control because it falls in their purview. So there's a couple of areas like that. Um and we'll always tell Was Dot and they've been pretty good about getting out there quickly. Um I'm and so we just let us know, we can always inform Was Dot or you can call them yourself, but we have their main line. So we can always, if you see a pothole, do not be afraid to report it if it's in the city limits. We'll make sure it gets taken care of either by us or by Was Dot or Thurston County. And speaking of Was Dot, um we had some issues with flooding in some of our parts of our streets, um their streets. Um what are we doing with that and how are we um trying to solve it on our own end? Yeah, so um if you look right now, there's no flooding. We fixed it. No, since it's um summer, you know, it gets a little bit drier, but on five oh seven specific, or five ten specifically over by Car Stars and Timberland Bank, we actually fixed those two flooding problems. So one side we read, we did a drain through there and it goes back to the swell behind it, which is great. The other side, we installed a sidewalk drain. So if you haven't been out there, we just laid it last week. There's a new sidewalk drain on the other side of five oh seven. So you should have zero flood or five ten, you should have zero flooding over by Timberland Bank this coming winter. Um and we're currently working on a solution for Clark Road. Clark Road's a little more interesting because the property behind it is not owned by the city and we don't have right of way to get it. So we have to figure out a creative solution that involves getting that water somewhere and how to get it there. So that's the next section we're tackling. Without Was Dot fully constructed. Yes, exactly. Without fully constructing. The big part about, um and the mayor mentioned this, is when we do any project in Was Dot's right of way, like a drain, they have requirements you have to follow. So it ends up doing way more than we expect. So if we wanted to do a small storm drain, we'd have to pave half lane two hundred feet both directions, which costs thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we don't want to dig up their pavement if we don't have to. And if we can fix a problem without digging up pavement, we do that. In this case, we were able to fix two problems without touching the pavement. So we don't have to go back and repave and spend, you know, a bunch of taxpayer money on repaving a bunch of highway.
I appreciate it. Cause I.
We do.
Director Colt, also um speaking of Wash Dot, uh we know that we're going to be getting the northern loop uh completed. Uh hopefully within a year or two. And my question is that uh for five oh seven, the concept is that it go, that no longer the right turn to stay on five oh seven, that they'll go straight down first, then Roden to uh get on to five, that loop and then continue on the direction. Are we working on any kind of uh memorandum of agreement with Wash Dot of taking care of that road? Because once the trucks really start hitting it, I know that those roads are within our city limits, but it's also you know, Wash Dot's plan. Do we have any plans of anything like that?
Uh not with Was Dot maintaining those roads. We have talked, we're upgrading, as you know, Roden Road in preparation for this and then NP Road right behind it to upgrade that, but no talks with Was Dot about maintaining those roads. We do have, we have talked with them about the truck route, as you're mentioning. So um as you're coming down five oh seven right here into town, a lot of traffic is generated by large trucks turning right or trying to turn left and they back up in those lanes and it's hard to get around. So the truck route will guide them straight through first street all the way down to Roden Road and they'll jump on the bypass there on Roden or NP Road, depending on which direction they're going. So we have talked to them about that and doing a truck route and they're on board with that aspect, but we have not negotiated or talked about them maintaining our roads. And we probably wouldn't. I think we can handle those roads even with the truck traffic and we're designing them for that.
Okay. I was just wondering like maybe sharing the cost or something like that, but thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for the question.
It's Cody. EDC contract.
Right. We um we are working towards um asking council with the, was it the next council meeting? For the fall, no, not the next, from the following, the end of this month. Uh um sign a contract with the EDC for ten thousand dollars per year, something the council has budgeted for in the past. Um we currently have a seat on the EDC. Uh Michael K, the executive director, is here. Um if you have any questions regarding anything on that, but some of the main parts of the scope of work that they're going to be doing is um maybe uh Michael wants to talk about it, but basically having steady uh business retention and expansion and recruitment of new businesses. Uh Michael, is there anything you'd like to add or talk, talk about?
No, I think we've talked about it before. There's six basic elements of the work that we do and you touched on most of them, but again, it really is a steady, which is South Thurston Economic Development Initiative. Um business recruitment and that's the business retention BRE program that we do. And that's our biggest chunk of work that we do at the Center for Business Innovations, working on this is to grow and expand and maintain them. The other piece is recruitment. Last four years, uh mayor knows that we've got a significant increase in our recruitment efforts reaching out of Thurston County, out of Washington State, actually, to recruit investment businesses that do business here and to locate here. That will continue to do and want to make sure that Yelm is part of that uh piece. We also want to work with the Yelm City Council. You know, it's just that my face has not been here enough. And I want to make sure that we're here and you have questions and you, let's just talk about economic development. You know, it's a passion of mine and dedicated my career to it and I love talking about it. So we should talk about it. Questions about it. Not afraid of them. So the last thing is creative districts. Um an interesting one for me. I sit on the Washington State Arts Commission Board. On the last week, we met in Wannanchi to talk about the creative districts and very passionate on that board about how creative districts creative economy is actually leading the way in many communities to grow and expand and kind of you know, kind of expand the local economy. And so I know there's been some talks about Yelm and creative districts, but we won't be ratified for that. It was interesting that the council, the commission last week at their meeting in Wannanchi, they actually took strong action to endorse it and make sure that it continues. And so I'm feeling good about that. And then the last thing we do is economic data dashboard. Mayor was part of this decision a couple of years ago is that we turn our organization around into really data driven entity. Follow the numbers. So since two thousand twenty two, I don't, this is a weird number I'd say was because since two thousand twenty two, we've served two hundred businesses in Yelm. Two hundred twenty two, 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 two. Uh so it's like, really? Two hundred? It was true. And we've served and that isn't like one business two hundred times. Uh it might be two businesses at least five times, but we follow the data, the work that we do and it's impacted upon you. We have some new databases that we use. Laser, we know kind of how things are spent. We can now track how things respond.
Red Lantern is a good example of um using Red Lantern. Um in Yelm, they've used uh the, I believe it's a scale up program.
Yeah, scale up program.
Um fairly successfully and you know, they're expanding and doing their own things and I think it's a good example.
Yeah, that's a good example. Thank you for bringing it up. Scale up. Um we started that in two thousand thirteen. The state liked it so much, they decided we're going to pay for it. Oh, okay. Go for it. Uh we didn't fund it this year and then budget. So it's not in the budget, you know, state's budget. So internally with our board, we said, we're going to figure it out. We'll hold it. And we'll figure it out. We're going to continue that program. We've always uh scholarship to businesses. Three phases of business. You got your operations, you got your fiscal, fiscal management and then your business growth. I did it into one program. Very effective, I think, in the last. Uh, your question, yeah, mine is quite fuzzy today. I'm sorry. Apologize. You know, last year it served eighteen hundred businesses, the state. One hundred percent of those businesses have had increase in their operations. So it's very successful. Yes, sir.
I was just wondering how much, because you were talking about how the state funded it and how they're not funding it this year. How much of a deficit or or that, how much does that affect you guys? What's the amount?
Money on it is three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That's three hundred fifty thousand dollars you're not getting from the state this year.
That's correct. Well, yes.
That's why I just want to know a number.
And strangely enough, this contract is for three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. So what businesses are you targeting for Yelm then to recruit?
Targeting?
Yeah. You say new.
Discussion yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't had a discussion yet, but we have generally, last year, we had four major sectors that we recruited through. One was um uh large retail retailers, uh nameplate retailers, uh light manufacturing, assembly, professional services, um and uh the other one, agriculture. Yeah, agriculture.
One of the portions of our council retreat will be to discuss what we want the EDC to kind of go after. And um after that, after that meeting, we'll go and meet with the EDC and we have a pretty good conversation of how we can um best help each other. So.
How we do that? Can I just take a moment and come talk a little bit how we do that work?
Yeah, please.
We actually subcontract with some professionals throughout. Actually, I worked very comfortable working with um company out of Houston. Been doing work with them for, we used to do it a long time ago and I kind of got away from it about five years ago, renewed that contract and it was kind of a wasn't really effective contract. It was kind of, well, okay, go to these trade shows, give me the list. I don't want that. So what we do is we identify the sectors that, great question, the sectors that we want, that we know will do well here. And then we uh contract for, give me twenty meetings this year of individuals that have identified, this is within those sectors, and they've identified they want to do business in Washington State. Okay, they want to do business in Washington State. Let's also talk about the ones that want to do business in Western. So we kind of went and went down and so we actually have twenty very focused meetings on, we present Thurston County. I'm a shill for Thurston County. I'm a salesperson for Thurston County at that point in time. So we engage in that kind of conversation. So we've done that for the last four years. So eighty businesses that I now actually have ongoing case management. They said, well, we're now working with this company and we're interested. What do you have? We go through the process. It's been very effective, to be honest. Now, we may go through a year where we have those very focused meetings. I don't get a case, but it might next year and that's usually what happens. Takes a while to get on the radar screen. And so we've, as long as we're consistent with it and we're sending the same message and we'll keep going back to that, well, people know we're there, we're interested and we have something to offer. We have a very strong value proposition in Thurston County. Um you, you know better than I do. You have a great community and Yelm is a wonderful community and Thurston County is a great place to do business. We've uh ranked very, very, very well nationally at four major data points that track stuff. Either number one, number three, or number five. It's weird.
Answer your question. They have been recruiting heavily in the pizza, pizza market as well as the coffee market. Yeah, coffee stands, pizza.
Yeah, that's a great question about the recruitment style um in the sectors, but that's something that we need to stay connected with you. It's like, hey, this is what we're getting feedback. Three years ago, interestingly enough, I'm sorry, bolstering on my backside talking, three years ago, number one issue was taxes, 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 taxes. Then it was workforce, 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 workforce. Then it was workforce, 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 workforce. In the last two years, energy. You have the energy to help us succeed in your community. You may have it now, but how are you demonstrating you're gonna have the energy in five years? We're gonna invest in your community. So we really had a strong dialogue with our energy providers um to do that, to make sure that they have an understanding that we're bringing business to Washington State and Thurston County. And they have to prepare for it and that's their job. So it's a good conversation now.
Oh, Michael, with the um Creative Arts District, we made it quite far through the process until Annette left. And I know she's been replaced, so maybe you can help us get back on track with that.
Yeah.
It gets kind of stopped at that economic point.
Yeah.
Like uh business uh support.
For it.
We can call anyone that.
They do have a new gentleman that's taken on that role. Uh his name is uh in three days.
Perhaps George can nudge that person, though.
Absolutely.
George Sharp is the steady.
And well, we definitely.
Just finish that. That would be great.
Crazy enough. Annette Roth, she now works for us.
Right.
Something else, but I kind of got it. But thank you. Well, pay attention. That's a great program.
You guys, you doing lobbying? Or businesses in the state because you know, this session has been rough.
Real rough.
Yeah, um and especially on businesses as well. And so do you guys like, could you lobby as well to try to stick up for for the small businesses that are being hurt this?
So I'm not a registered lobbyist. You know, registered lobby. We certainly do a lot of advocacy work. Um and that's where the data comes in. So that's where we provide messages to decision-makers that this bill or this direction has this impact upon this sector. And so we certainly do that. I think I spent more time on the legislative hallways this last year than ever before.
You do like for the, they, they don't lobby like Michael's saying, but um as a board member, I can tell you that he's presented during session many bills that would impact businesses, um positive and negative. Um mainly negative on, on this year, but um he does bring to our attention. Um and these are the bills that not only he advocates for, but like the Association of the Washington Businesses, they lobby for, for those, uh very similar. But there are a lot of groups similar to the E D C that directly lobby for.
Our strategy has been is to kind of hitch our wagon A W B. Uh but we're also uh uh on the, we're on, I'm on the board of the Washington Economic Development Association, W I D A, which is our lobbyist. And so meet with their lobbyists. They have two contracted lobbyists and they carry those messages from that board. I take it from our board, I put it in front of them and then they move it out as a lobbyist. And then they tell me where to go, who to talk to, what messages I needed to say, so. Oh, yeah.
The boards for economic development though, so they are very business-friendly as you can imagine.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down here.
The thing is, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. You know, I do appreciate it. Um and thank you for the contract this year. Looking forward to it. And I always kind of view a contract as an opportunity to have a stronger two-way dialogue and we want to listen to you and work with you. Mayor DePinto is a wonderful member of our Board of Directors, so thank you.
I can't. Also applicants, are you ready? Doesn't sound very ready. You guys sound.
And this is for the drawing of the order.
So what I'm gonna do is draw names. So if you haven't been through this process before, some of you have, some have not. Uh we draw names in order that you'll come. You all go outside and then in order you come in, you come in. We'll go through down the line, ask questions, you'll respond. Then when we're done, the next person and so on. And then, you know, in two weeks, we vote, well, not two weeks, but in a few weeks, we vote and you'll take your seat.
I got a question before we go through that. It's uh the time frame. Uh why are we not voting at the next council meeting?
Because it's a joint session with planning commission, so.
Otherwise we would be.
The reason, I mean, and that, that, that also brings into question, if we're having a joint meeting with the planning commission, it wouldn't, wouldn't it be a lot more constructive to have whichever individual we decide that's gonna be appointed to the seat at that involved in that meeting as well?
Hopefully they attend the meeting. We would absolutely love you to attend next week, but there's not gonna be any decision-making or anything at that meeting. It'll just be more of an informative. We're getting multiple presentations um from the county, from our, the planning department. Who else?
CJ Alliance, T R P C.
So they're mainly presentations at this meeting.
I understand, but and and pardon me, but it seems that this would be something that if we go through the process today of the interview, we'd have uh a week to for all of us to kind of process the information and and I think that we would I can speak for myself, of course. I think that would be more than adequate time to make a decision on on uh, you know, which candidate was qualified.
This was also the, what the council decided on too, the schedule. Um I don't know if it would be fair for the applicants to kind of switch it up on them and possibly people that would have applied, maybe seeing it was a quicker process. Um but I, unless council thinks otherwise, I think we are gonna stick with the current schedule. Is there any?
I'm just gonna say that uh when ever made his announcement, brought it up, I said, okay, can we please get it done as quickly as possible and the plan that we came up with was the one that was agreed upon by everybody that it was wanted, met the requirements of, of being able to make the announcement and have the people putting their applications. I would have preferred to have had this during an actual session, but a study session was what it was planned to be and the reason why it couldn't be during the actual session for the next one is because of the meeting being a joint one and being over in the community center because of how large it's going to be. So it just, it, it's one that was discussed. I can't remember if you were here or not.
I, I, that was, I had my tooth extraction that day, so I was.
Well, I just wanted to let you know the background on that, that that, we made sure that we correctly uh did things and made sure that we were fair to everybody who got used to it. So I mean, I, I did ask if we could do it, but uh we, it was presented by the member, by our clerk that that would be a very busy, long session because of what's already being planned.
Thank you. It won't be missing any votes, so. So whoever comes on will start making votes at the um city council meeting that they'd be sworn in at, that second one.
I would encourage all applicants to attend that meeting. At least one of you should be there. All right. Who's ready?
Wait, why are you choosing no?
The order.
The order. But they go, yeah.
Yeah.
And then they get called back.
Yeah.
Think we can, you can, they can be drawn now so that everyone knows what order they are.
Yeah, so you know, okay, I'm up next. I'm like, oh, where am I going? Where am I going?
What's up first?
Kayla will be first. Then David. Oh, who we got? Carl. And that leaves, who knows? Who remembers Ashley? So Mr. Colt will guide you guys back. Kayla can step forward and.
Guys, I'm just gonna pull up some of my own.
Just while she's doing that, I just want you to know that each applicant, as their applications came in, um each person was emailed and then a reminder also went out to them about this meeting, about the meeting, the second meeting um of the month and then also just to prepare a you know, have a statement prepared of, you know, why they want to be on council, so.
I think we got three emails, actually. Hi guys. Most of you know me. I've been here a hundred times, it feels like. Um where I've made phone calls to you to ask questions. Who is Dusty? He's on speed dial at this point. So um I just like information, so if I can't find it, I will find it. Um, last time I was here, I was told, you know, join committees, join whatever. So now I'm on yet the Civil Service Commission and the Parks Committee for the city. Um we go through a lot of information on the parks. Um it's my favorite meeting of the month and I go to a lot of meetings for Head Start and different organizations, but that's definitely my favorite. Um, I'm on the, I'm the chairperson for Head Start's Policy Council, which is the parent side of Head Start. There's two different sides of Head Start. There's a board, which is the educational board side, and then there's the parent side. Nothing can go through Head Start without coming to us. And so this year I chaired that board and last year I was the vice chair of that board. Again, just love it. I love what they do and what they represent. We've really learned to just meet people where they're at and that's my favorite part of just being a person now. Like I realized that I probably wasn't doing that before and now I do that. I can talk to anybody and just understand where they're coming from. You don't talk to just talk, you talk to listen as well. That's really important, I think. Questions?
Questions, yeah. Um I forgot to mention, council, so you know, one question per, we'll start down the line. And then if you have a secondary follow-up, we'll just go in a circle. Right? Sound good? So we're not bombarding one person on all questions. Mr. Wood?
Yes, off.
Okay, um my question is, I know that you're very busy. I know you have a lot going on and it amazes me how you stay informed as well as you do on all the ongoings in this community. Do you think that you, with all of, all the activities that you're doing, that you have time to uh commit the time that it takes to uh to go to the meetings and even more involved if that's possible?
I wouldn't be here if I didn't have time. I already know that I have the time to commit to that. Um really just talking to people. That's how you stay informed and ask questions. I'm already doing that, so.
Thank you.
I'm so encouraged that you applied again, Kayla. Um my question is after feeling and experiencing rejection more than once and being told no and possibly thinking, I will never apply again, what drove you to apply again?
It wasn't possibly thinking I will never apply again. I will never stand here again. It was thinking I will never stand here again. I was positive in that. Um, but I talked to like my dad who had a heart attack and had to be brought back and you live one life. So if you give up on those dreams, then what? You always think about the what-ifs. Um I wear this bracelet for one of my great friends who's battling breast cancer right now and she's like, man, if I would have just done anything, right? Should have gone to Vegas one more time, just in case. You have one life. Why not? Why not?
All right, I have multiple questions, but this one starts us off with. Boy, yeah. So in, in regards to community engagement, it's kind of a two-part. Right. And we, we've had the conversations the last few years and um some about a different issues, some we agree, some we don't, we disagree with on. And you seem to be a little more knowledgeable than the average young resident in regards to what's happening around the community, on the city government and all that things. So first of all, I ask, you know, why, why, why did, why does it seem like you know more than average person when you're, when you have the same access? And then secondly, are there any specific methods you would like to see implemented to ensure that there's regular effective communication with residents about council decisions?
That's two questions.
That's a two-parter. First part is how does she know? The second part, how is she gonna help other people know what she knows?
Follow the rules and your rules.
I don't think I can explain it to them. You still want your answer to the question. I got it.
Um so I don't know that it's that I know more. I just use the resources available. So I'm really I think I'm really good about reaching out to you guys. You might think I'm annoying. Um, yeah, just use the resources available. Attend the meetings. I don't think I have missed a single city meeting in over a year, um including coun- council meetings and study sessions. And I tend to refer back to them often, like if a community member asks me a question, I'll be like, hold on, and I'll find it or I just remember. I don't know why I remember all of the city things that I do. Um I just do. And like I said, I'll call you guys or if it's something that happened like five years ago, I have called James Blair, I have called E J. I've been like, hey, why was this? Why was this the decision that was made? Just to get information or a different perspective or things like that. And to bring that information to other like community members is just having those conversations. I get messages and emails and stopped in the grocery store. My kids absolutely love that one. Um and just ask, hey, why was this done? And I can explain like, well, we talked about it in the Parks Committee and it was, we're gonna revamp Long Meyer and we're gonna put turf fields in. Parking is going in across the street. That's why the road was closed for that reason. Just knowing the answer and meeting people where they're at, so the grocery store, a baseball game, wherever.
You don't want to finish your book?
I said one at a time, my God, I'll come back around.
Oh. Um, those are great answers and you're definitely involved in the community and I appreciate that. We definitely need people on the council um that that, that know their stuff, that look for the history uh and be able to share that as well. So I definitely appreciate that. Um we see you. And if you were faced with a decision that was popular with voters, but in your view harmful in the long run, how would you handle that situation?
The conversation. Conversation, right? Sometimes you don't have all the information. You're like, this is, this is my choice. This is where I stand. But you have that conversation and things start to look different. You start to understand a different perspective. There's just, that's where I start with that. This job isn't about me or this position isn't about me. This position is about our citizens. It's about our city and what their needs, wants and desires are ultimately. My choice kind of goes sideways and we figure it out.
Uh, my question, Anna, I apologize for everybody here, but it's something that we're facing right now. It's uh executive orders have been written. One of them happens to deal with D E I, with D E I about how, and we are facing it uh within our various committees. Uh the fact that any grants that we've applied for, that we addressed diversity, equity and inclusion. We now have to consider, are we going to go through those, rewrite all those grant applications to remove all those words or whether we're going to keep them? I would like your view on, because when you come on to the city council, you are now gonna have to be faced with that. And so I'd like to know what your view is on it.
Uh, real quick, um sorry to interrupt. I have not seen that on council. Uh, is that something coming up in the committee? Did that come up?
Yeah. Yes, we've talked about it on T R P C. We've recently voted on that.
It's coming up in intercity transit authority. Also with anything that Director Colt has put in a grant for, he's gotta start looking at again. Because these are things that they are in the process. A letter went out to the state of Washington and to all the committees stating you cannot have diversity, inclusion or equity in any of your statements. And if those are in the grants or when the grants are reviewed to find out if they're gonna be reimbursed, they may be denied. So these are serious questions. This is a serious issue. Yes, I just wanted to address him.
Yeah, I was just like, I want to make sure the question, some we dealt with, because I haven't dealt with that as a council member in any committee that hasn't been brought up.
I haven't seen it in any of my city committees. We have dealt with it at Head Start and at that level. Um the rule's the rule. Just like we have codes, we have to follow our codes, right? So if we're getting these things that says, hey, we're not doing D E I here, reword it. Go back, work it, figure it out so that you can still get your same grant with the same answers. You just reword it. Is it more work? Yes. Is it time-consuming and annoying? Sure. But if we need the grant, we need the grant. We're gonna have to follow the rules.
No, thank you.
Appreciate your tenacity. That's what it takes. The question that Tracy posed on time, is your time committed throughout the day during the week with something else? Like you don't have, work a full-time job or you have to be in a specific place and time, so you are flexible to go to meetings any time of day?
Yeah, I'm less of a stay-at-home.
Okay. Uh and the only other thing I wanted to ask, just really because I don't know, I know that you um are really active on a certain Facebook community thing. So what do you think is the role of social media as it pertains to the county?
Social media, she said she had to. You didn't say that out loud. Um, social media is negative and positive, right? So for me, it's getting factual information. Information is too easy to misinterpret or interpret as somebody else wants to. It's too easy to just throw a lie out there and then ride on it. For me, I just like facts. Facts are easy, and if you correct with facts, there's no argument. There shouldn't be an argument. There's always an argument. Um, not much just important as facts.
I just found one question.
Yeah, so I was told the rules. I'll ask the question. I'll see one more that I wanna ask everybody. Um, the same question as well. Uh, so what do you see as Yelm's greatest challenge over the next, say, five to 10 years? And how would you address that as a council member?
Growth. Growth is, it's bound to happen. We have to have growth. Well, what's our plan as a city right now? We're growing right now, and I don't know that there's much of a plan other than putting in roundabouts and completing the bypass. That's our plan. I think we should probably work on more side streets and getting those more built, like we just talked about. That's nice. Um, but walkable paths that connect. Right now, there's no path from like my house to Fort Stevens. I get begged every single day. Can we walk to school? No. There is no sidewalks.
We're doing that.
We are doing that in 2026. Thanks. It was supposed to be 2025. Cody has pushed it back a year on me. We had this conversation.
Any else?
The rules, one question.
No.
Same question for each person. Unless it pertains to the application.
Thank you, Kayla.
Mr. Johnstone's, uh,
Mayor Protemp just changes the rules.
That's right. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I've gotta face it. I'm not a Tracy shirt. It's using the flag right here. The same thing, it's just.
Good evening, council. My name is David Johnstone, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with you today. I've been a lifelong resident of Thurston County and have called Yelm home for over eight years. Professionally, I believe many are familiar with my background, having appointed me to planning commission not just once, but twice. I bring over two decades of experience managing operations across various industries. I approach problems with a system, systems-level perspective, and I believe in building things that work efficiently. In addition to my career, I've served as president of a homeowners association and recently as a planning commissioner for the city of Yelm. This experience has strengthened my ability to speak to groups, resolve conflicts, and build consensus. When working in a group, I prioritize finding the best solution over being personally right. I approach collaboration by valuing perspectives and focusing on what works, rather than whose idea it is. I aim to lead with integrity and rely on a firm moral compass to guide my actions, even when it's not the easiest path. Um, I anticipate a curiosity of whether or not I will file as a candidate. I intend to complete this interview and use that experience to make a fully informed decision. I recognize that the city invests a significant amount of time and resources into bringing a new council member up to speed. One of my concerns is that a short-term appointment may not provide enough time to become fully acclimated and make a meaningful impact. I want to ensure that my service truly benefits Yelm and its residents. These factors weigh heavily in my decision and incline me to file as a candidate. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Oh, so we're, Mr. Wood?
I get to go again.
You're number one.
Um, it sounds like you've got a lot going on. That's awesome. I'm curious what your thoughts are on, uh, the added responsibilities of, uh, you know, our three meetings we have here a month, plus, of course, all, uh, the appointed committees and things, and if you feel you have enough time to really fully, uh, absorb all that information.
It's, it's definitely a concern. Um, I'm definitely gonna have to resign from the planning commission. Um, and I, I'm ready to make the commitment, but it definitely will be a lot back to my point.
You said you served as president of the homeowners association?
I have it.
As president of the homeowners association that you served, can you share with us an experience or a story about perhaps uh, a conflict that came up and with the resolution, uh, because I love solving things, I love fixing things. Is there a story you can share with us about a conflict that arose and the way you guys found some resolve?
Uh, there's just endless conflict with the natureway. So it's definitely a tricky balance to try to run in a natureway but not, uh, be a dictator or to not have the neighborhood feel uh, that it's a hostile environment. So.
Is there like one instance you can recall?
Um,
without saying anybody's names, of course.
Uh, just recently, uh, and, uh, someone complained about dogs and wanted us to to, uh, approach the neighbors so that we're having to deal with neighbors and the homeowner and, and trying to not get everyone mad or fighting with each other, or to be used as a tool for another homeowner.
Uh, and then you have to, no Christmas card for that guy.
What was the resolution of that?
Um, generally, we tell them to, uh, call the police to make a noise complaint, and then we'll use that information to try to move forward if it's not resolved. Because generally, in that scenario, we're, we're not investigators, we're not detectives, so we like to rely off the experts' report.
Thank you for sharing.
All right, so I have a hard time asking this one question for you. I have a lot for you. I think they're all really good, so I'm having a hard time deciding which one. Um, so you've been on, for this a little bit now, and I see myself like once this council, my council position runs its term, and I'm done being on council, planning commission is something I'll probably apply for, uh, because I like being involved with the growth of my town. Um, so again, my question for you, why do you want to leave the planning commission and come to this team over here? Is there?
I don't want to leave the planning commission, and actually, it was a hard decision to submit my application because I don't feel that, again, kinda like I said in here, that I've fully left my mark or contributed as much as I possibly could. Um, I definitely think having someone on city council who has had some experience in the planning commission would be a good way to bridge that gap. There is some disconnect in some sense, especially right now, when we're trying to work on the comprehensive plan. I, I think it would be a good crossover, uh, to try to get the com- plan done by December 31st.
The pay is amazing.
It is better than paying commission. Thanks, sir. We're going one at a time, one question at a time, so maybe I'll do the asking.
Sure.
Because maybe somebody will. I only have a lot of questions. This is King, Miss King, I do.
So my question is, not that you would know that it was the same, but it's the same. If you were faced with a decision that was popular with voters, but in your view harmful in the long run, how would you handle that situation?
So harmful in the long run, what do you, I'm gonna clarify what that means. But harmful to the city? Harmful to what?
Harmful, yeah, harmful for the city.
I, I guess I would need to do some more research to fully figure out what my obligation is uh, with regard to if it's the city or just the voters. Um, I would assume it's both, but I, I'm not entirely sure which one supersedes. Right? So I, I can't fully ask that, but it would definitely be hard to make a decision that I knew was not in the best interest of the city.
That's a fair answer. It's hard as a counselor, because you deal with some of these, um, things that you feel like, oh, wait, I was headed in this direction, and that's what I wanted. And then once you get there, or you're hearing, you know, voters, uh, which is, you know, who you're working for or with, uh, um, fair. Thank you.
Mine is, uh, recently, we're having an issue with, uh, executive orders that have been written. Uh, one of them that is now affecting committees and commissions throughout a variety of states is that we have to remove DEI from all grant applications that have been submitted and such, and we also, any new grants cannot have that. I just would like to know, how do you plan? Because you will be sitting on a commission possibly that has to deal with that, or when it comes to us as a city, you might have to have a say in that. What, how, what is your view in reference to that, and how would you handle it?
I, I, I'm not familiar with any policies that we have, so I can't really speak to that, so. Um, I would wanna try to come up with whatever was the best solution for the people of Yelm.
Thank you.
I think we're lucky, because you're either gonna be over here, or you're gonna be on the planning. Um, I don't have any questions, David, just I really appreciated the way you expressed yourself in your application.
Thank you.
No, we're waiting on yours.
The council. All right. So I got some good ones here. I think you're good. So in regards to business development, this is, you know, based on your application here. What types of businesses do you think are most critical for Yelm to attract? And how would you address concerns about maintaining fairness for existing small businesses versus, I mean, I don't know what plans or ideas you think for attracting other businesses, but how would you, those kind of go hand-in-hand there?
I, I definitely think that's tricky. I think we're at a stage where we need more commercial resources. Um, so trying to get more restaurants or more stores or more resources so that you don't have to drive 20, 30 minutes to Lacey for anything that you need, and still preserving our local businesses. I'm not entirely sure what that answer is. But I do recognize that that's where we're at.
I do another one.
Right here.
Thanks. Well, I want, do want to ask the same question of everybody, but I have a couple of, I will cut some out, okay?
You might switch roles.
More questions listening to yours, you never know.
Uh, what do you see as Yelm's greatest challenge over the next five to 10 years, and how would you address that as a council member?
Uh, I think your previous question leads into that. And just the growth, managing the growth, the requirements by the state of Washington for additional housing, and trying to keep up with the resources that we need here. That, that is our challenge.
Oh, oh, Wes. I have more, but it's good for now. Thank you.
Prosecution arrests.
Thank you.
Thank you. David, all right. Next applicant.
Thank you. Thanks.
Rest in peace.
We've got one specifically. But you're gonna mess it up. Josh tried that one time, and he butchered it. And Stephanie was mad the whole time.
He was. Okay.
Hey, Carl.
I have a podium if you wanna introductory speech, and then we'll all ask you a question or two.
Hi, our council members, people of Yelm. Um, it is an honor to be here today. Uh, I'm Carl Seberia. I'm interviewing and running for Yelm City Council to be the ears and the voice of our community. As a former staff sergeant in the US Army, I've spent years advocating for soldiers. And now I'm bringing that same commitment and that same energy to the city of Yelm. Uh, to fight for better schools, stronger businesses, especially s- small businesses, and smarter growth for our city. Uh, number one, our kids deserve more resources in the classroom as well as teachers. Um, I believe in working in partnership with local organizations, uh, securing, and securing, secure funding that directly benefits our schools and youth programs. Also, in doing so without having to raise taxes. Um, you know, I'd like to explore partnership with org- organizations like JBLM. I've seen it in other states where uh, bases have helped out schools or provided them resources, and I would just wanna provide the bridge to be able to get our, ensure our kids uh, that goes to our school district gets better education, gets better opportunity, especially because our town is home to a lot of active-duty members and veterans. Um, number two, uh, young, small businesses, they are the heart of the city. Um, and I do believe in reducing unnecessary costs and red tape or providing some kind of program to better encourage our business, our businesses to come to our, our city. Because when businesses flourish, so does our community. Uh, three is, as we grow, our roads must grow with us. Um, I will work with local and state leaders to expand infrastructure, reduce traffic heading. Um, and, um, achieve this without burdening our residents here at Yelm, uh, in terms of taxes. Um, another priority is public safety with growth. Um, in our community, would mean that we need to also grow our police departments to allow them to be able to, um, react to situations in a timely manner. And finally, because again, we are home to a lot of veterans and active-duty members, uh, I believe in fighting for better access for mental health. Uh, so, mental health services, you know, especially for our veterans, active-duty, um, and even you. It's not always about punishing others. It's, some may need, some may need care in intervention, and in my experience, mental health is very important. So I'm ready to serve, to build a stronger Yelm together. Thank you.
Go with Terry's time and okay.
Oh, thank you for your service, and I don't have any questions. Thank you very much.
Um, mine is, uh, something that's just come up recently. It's with, through the executive orders, one of the executive orders was to remove DEI. Uh, that is now affecting a lot of commissions and committees, uh, with, that deal with grants. Because when they previously wrote them, that was something that the state of Washington required, so they have been put forward. Uh, because the federal government's now getting ready to do reviews of all those grants that are currently being requested, as well as ones that are to be reimbursed. They, we may have to do a lot of rewriting. What is your position on that, and how do you plan to handle that if selected?
Well, council member, in my, in my opinion, it doesn't matter what background a person has, whether they're, you know, from what ethnicity, or what, um, whether they wanna classify us. If they are the most qualified, then I believe they should be given the opportunity to, to show themselves and show what they can do. Um, this is, I've seen it in the military, it doesn't matter what person's background is, they, everybody has potential to make it up, to make it up there, to make it up in terms of moving up, uh, through, whether it's promotion or getting, uh, selected for a higher position. Everybody has potential, regardless of what background it is. I had the same, the same drive, and I don't look at my, my And I don't look at my, my, who I am or my ethnicity is, I don't look at myself as that. What I look at is what can I bring to the table? As well as how can I positively affect everybody around me? As I am an, I've been a non-commission officer in the army and I believe in fighting for my soldiers. And I, I've fought for my soldiers regardless of what ethnicity they were. I had a um, soldier who was, he wasn't very uh, liked by my platoon sergeant, but I made sure that um, that I got him promoted because I saw his potential. And, and he did, I developed him. Even when my, my leaders thought um, that it was some kind of a joke, but I meant it. That's the way I see um, just whoever's most qualified. Look at the, the rapture, the, the um, their history of what, what, how they performed and base your decision on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
If you were faced with a decision that was popular with voters, but in your view, sitting in the council seat, uh, it was harmful in the long run, how would you handle that situation?
In the long run, if it was harmful, it would be something I wouldn't support, however, maybe we could come to um, the common ground. Maybe we could figure something out where, or um, negotiate in a way that doesn't create any kind of long-term negative effects on, on our community. Um, that's the way I see it. Um, but if it was really absolutely going to cause harm, it would be something I'd be against. But I'm always open to having a conversation. I'm always open to um, coming up with a solution. A perfect middle ground.
Alright, so what do you see as Yelm's greatest challenge over the next five to ten years? And how would you address it as a council member?
So what I'm seeing um, obviously growth is, is one. So with growth, we have to, I believe that we, we have to address the infrastructure and the logistic portion of it, such as building the roads necessary to accommodate for the extra, for the overload of, of growth that we're, that Yelm is receiving. And the other one that I, that I do believe in or think of is um, for schools. Because I'm, I have three children that goes to the school here in this district and um, I think just as my children deserve better education, what I want to do is advocate to get our schools more funding to give them more, you know, provide them programs that they need and then necessary to be able to grow up and have the skills needed to make it through in life. But it's not only that as well, but the programs that, that we provide. It's, how to say? It helps, it helps them, you know, not just in development, but it also keeps them busy and keeps them out of trouble. And you know, you just want something fun to do and I don't see why not. It helps them out, it helps the community and helps them grow.
Thank you.
First off, thank you for your service. You know, you said you, you staff sergeant to, to, to your, uh, is it a platoon or is it this?
Um, I was, was um, a section sergeant with artillery. I was a drill sergeant.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering. So as a staff sergeant, it sounds like you've advocated for many. Uh, and, and so that's remarkable there's um. And I'm watching you and I'm watching how you listen and process information. And before you speak, you take a pause and you think and you uh, you have some intellect. What I'm wondering too is beyond that, there's, there, when you sit in this seat, there's a lot of data. There's a lot of information. There's a lot of emotion. There's a lot of uh, thoughts of how people might like or not like you. But anyways, as far as how you process that, we all do that differently. What I want to know is what are some skill sets and abilities that you might possess? That when you sit in this seat would either benefit or contribute to how we deliberate decisions?
Mine's a lot of critical thinking. When I take on data, I uh, look at everything as a whole, uh, how, how the data came, came to be. Um, where it started, what was, was the, um, the reason why? The research was, you know, conducted to be able to reach to this data and how to um, what can, what are ways that can either better improve it or?
Or just your personal skills and abilities, you know, that would make you fit in well?
Well.
And you spoke some a little bit already.
Aside from critical thinking, I uh, again, I unlike every other, I mean, I have life experiences that, that every average American has, have go through. And I believe that I, there's a better, so we can uh, a lot of uh, issues that come up. Without, obviously having to be too extreme. Left or right, you know, I'm, I'm more of a solution type of guy than I am about politics.
How you doing, man? I'd like to circle back to a question you were asked earlier. Um, and you, and you gave a good answer, but I think, I don't think it was quite the answer that, that uh, as far as what the question was. And the question was um, to put, to make it easier to understand what the question is. Do you think that it would be appropriate to go against a, an executive order by the President of the United States? Do you think that would be appropriate? Or do you think that i- if you didn't, if you disagreed with that, that you, you should fight against it?
Regarding the D E I?
In terms of D E I?
In term, yeah, in terms of the question that was asked. And, and that's not, I'm, I am purposely avoiding that because I'm, I would like to focus more, my question is more focused on the executive order passed down by the President of the United States. Do you believe that's something that should be, that should be followed? Or do you think it should be something that should be, should be held up and installed out and questioned and?
I believe that's something that should be questioned. Um, in my opinion, it'd be questioned. Because I feel like that's just pretty vague in that it could, if anybody wanted to uh, how do you say? Somebody of higher position could overlook at somebody's qualities.
So just to, to, to get through this, so what you're saying is, do you believe there are times where even an executive order from the, from the President of the United States should be, should be, should be gone against, that we, it should be uh, you know, stood up against, that, that there's, there are times.
There are. Some constitutional, yes, absolutely.
I understand, but what, I'm not talking about the constitution. I'm talking about an executive order, which is constitutional. And it's, like I said, I'm not trying to debate about you, uh, about it. I'm just curious. My stance is, you believe that there's, the executive order is something that at times should be questioned and should be, not just questioned, because of course you should question it, but should be opposed. Uh, openly opposed, just without due process, with just somebody because the decision was made. And the reason I'm asking this is based off the question you were asked, I think was kind of unfair. Um, you know, it, in reference to D E I, because there's a whole lot of executive orders. Um, so that's why I'm asking, do you believe that there are times where it should, that, that the executive order should be um, opposed and?
So this is away from D E I now?
Uh, I, yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm asking the ten thousand foot question. I'm not narrowing it down to one specific situation, the D E I in this particular case. I'm asking in general, do you believe the president has the power to make executive, to, to pass executive orders? That of course will be scrutinized by the upper courts, but at, on a state level. I, I guess this, being this, the, the, the way the question was framed and, and according, you know, with the D E I involvement.
As his role as a council member here.
As his role, well, and as he put it, as his role on boards that are beyond the council.
His capacity as council, young council member.
As a rep, well, as a young council member, as a representative on these, these high, these higher boards in the commu- in the, in the county. Or in the uh, or in the state for that.
Well, I believe it can be opposed and then.
I, I understand, but at this level.
Let me see what went on.
Yeah. Thank you.
You make it felt well. Good. Man, thank you. Alright, last applicant.
But I'm not applying for nothing.
It's a lot harder. You apply and do the.
This guy.
That was like with gauntlet, right?
Thank you for willing.
I'll say your forty-five minute timer now. Okay, can I just start?
Give your speech and then we'll go down the line, ask you a question or two.
Alright, um, so my name's Ashley Spelker. Uh, my interest in joining Yelm City Council is rooted in a deep commitment for our youth, um, to their future of Yelm and this community. For nearly a decade, I have been proud to call Yelm my home and raise my four children here. Over the years, I've actively supported our youth, whether it's from coaching here in our youth sports or volunteering as a booster member and our elementary schools and stepping in our middle schools when needed. Uh, I believe our youth are the heart of Yelm's future. And I want my children and their children to grow up in a town where they're proud of and where they want to return to raise their children and families. Yelm is growing and with that growth comes opportunity and a responsibility to preserve the close-knit small-town spirit that makes this community special. As a city council member, my field's actually began guiding that growth with future generations in mind while supporting our local businesses and protecting the welcoming hometown feeling that we cherish.
That glass, I mean, that's crazy.
So let me listen to your question.
Put some reins on you.
Uh, thank you for coming in. Um, I'm curious if you, this is, there's a lot of meetings involved with being on the council. There's two council meetings and one plus a study session. And then all of the appointment committees outside of uh, outside, well, some inside the city and some outside the city. I'm curious if you feel that, if you've taken that into consideration, is this something that you feel you have the drive and the time to do?
Uh, thankfully, I have a very strong village here um, that are thinking of my children right now uh, from all of their sports activities. So, yes. Because I feel like it's important that I should make time for that to build in our community. So, yeah.
Thanks. Said you work with youth and that's phenomenal to me. Um, sometimes with youth, you have to have really, really confrontational conversations, some life lessons. Um, some of the things we remember the most, especially when it comes to life lessons, are emotional. They're connected to trauma. Um, I'm not asking you to get too deep here. But um, is there a life lesson that you might just share with us? Whether it be about you or uh, or uh, you know, working with a young person where you either had to correct discipline? And because again, I want to know, how did you get to some life lessons? There's, share with me a life lesson that will never leave you.
Okay, uh, my life lesson is being present. You had to hit that hard.
You got it, the emotion is coming. Because it's real, now the emotion comes.
I didn't have active parents. And so I am an active parent. Um, my kids only have me. They don't have a very active father and that's okay because I'll pick up the slack anytime I need to. Um, and again, my village is super, super important to me. And my kids are very well aware that they are a priority. And with them being a priority, the town that we live in is priority. Um, so getting involved and making sure that their future is stable. My life lesson is being present, whether it's volunteering, whether it's parenting, all of that stuff is, is where I should be.
I'm so glad you work with youth.
Sorry.
Good. No, you're great. I love this.
Alright, so you have answered some of my question already, but so let's build on that, on the topic of growth and development. So how would you address concerns from residents about maintaining Yelm's small-town charm and amongst the increasing development?
I think our parks and recreation does a lot of that for us. Um, I think building on that and continuing to get that support for them. Um, but also focusing on a lot of our small businesses to maintain their structure. Because my kids love going to ship lap and getting a donut and I love getting a coffee. And you know, when they were saying that they're struggling, that's the first stop we're going to do in the morning is go and, and support those small businesses. Um, I also work part-time for Yard. Um, and I love seeing the growth there. And I love seeing the involvement that they're doing in the community as well. Um, so just supporting what's here and helping grow on that instead of building more blocks and challenges based off of like bringing in bigger companies. Let's support our smaller companies and make them stronger.
Um, my question is the same all the way around. I love your community support and uh, I think our paths have actually.
Yes, exactly. Yes, there we go, yep.
Um, so being on council, being in the community, um, and lots of different threads with that. If you were faced with a decision that was popular with voters and you were you, uh, the decision would be harmful in the long run, how would you handle the situation?
I think you have to go with your gut and what you think is going to be helpful in the long run, regardless of the pressure from the community. Um, I think a lot of people don't see what goes on inside. They only see what they think that they want to see. Um, so I think going with your gut and following the instinct of making sure that that's going to be a future change and it's going to build to your future is important versus having the popularity contest of, I voted with you because you wanted it that way.
Kind of challenging. Re- uh, recent events with things that are going on, that you're going to be kind of jumping into the fire of. Uh, with executive orders that have been coming down, one of the challenging ones for a lot of committees and commissions that you may get assigned to and be part of is that there is no, that D E I is to be removed from all grant applications. And so my question for you is, how do you plan to handle that? How do you plan to handle it? Because Director Colt, with many of the grants that he puts in, uh, applying through Washington, just the way it was supposed to be and doing that. But yeah, the question I have is, how do you plan to handle when we're all some faced with the fact that we might have to rework a grant or something like that?
I would have to do a lot of my own research to make sure that we're moving in the right direction with that. Um, if we're reapplying for a grant, we need to find out the why and how we're going to make sure that we get that grant processed and funded. I don't, I'm very independent when it comes to politics, so I don't. that grant processed and funded. Um, I don't, I'm very independent when it comes to politics, so I don't have a lot of say on either side. Um, so I would have to really dig into what topic I specifically have to make sure that we're making the right choice.
Thank you.
I don't have a very profound question. Um, are you the lady that worked for the doctors?
Uh, I, I, I run an orthodontic management, or I run.
Okay, so do you do that from home or?
Both. I am in office two days a week, Wednesdays and Fridays, and I am remote and traveling morning timeframe and then I'm free in the afternoon.
So I just wondered if you, like Tracy asked, if you would have time during the day to go to breakout meetings, if you have that flexibility with your job?
Some, most days, yes. Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays, yes, I have the flexibility. Um, but I do, I, I do my split job, so I run an office and I also run the whole program. So.
That was my question. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Wow.
Oh, buddy.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Get this away.
All right, um, thank you for all the applicants that have done this. Um, and I know, thank you, Ashley, for being here for a lot, the last one, being in that room, by, by, um. We will go ahead and notify you, well, you've already know, you should know the schedule next week. Um, I, I think Kathy sent it out, but next week there is an app, um, a city council meeting with the joint with the planning commission. It would be helpful for all of you to, to attend that, um, regardless if you're on it or not, it's going to be helpful to, to know this knowledge. Um, that said, um, again, thank you all for doing this. I know it's not easy to come up in front and um, get grilled on some questions by the council. Actually, if it's your first time, it can be pretty intimidating. Um, so thank you for stepping up, doing that. Um, it will be decided, a decision will be made on um, the, you know, the actual date is that Tuesday? Yeah. Right, just looking up real fast.
Um. May 27th.
May 27th, please be in attendance for that meeting as well. Um, council will go ahead and do a, a majority vote, so whoever gets four votes will go ahead and become the next city health member and immediately the, it will be sworn in by myself and you will take your seat upon the dais that meeting. Uh, it'll be good for you to look up at the agenda and see what, what we are discussing at that point, so you can be ready to take action if need be. Um. Regarding other duties, just an update on a couple of things. JBLM, I've been trying to get a tour set up with um, for Special Forces, which is our partner, a community partner on, on base as well as the Garrison Command. And we are looking at June 6th, I believe, is that the, June 6th, a Friday, I'm in the afternoon. Um, you'll, as long as all, everything's good to go, you will be given um, just base access for that day and they'll go ahead and Kathy will go ahead and um, coordinate that with us on our end, but um, looking forward to that. We'll be chatting with different groups and um, seeing um, just basically getting a tour and what they do over there. Other than that, do you want to give an update on the Veterans Memorial? Um, since our last meeting, that they came, the veterans came in and um, showed displeasure of what happened and everything we did, go ahead and meet with them the, the following day, the following morning, when I say us, um, Cody, myself, um, and Todd. Um, we met with a few different veterans groups here and discussed what the next plan of action would be. And we settled on the memorial being returned at the Yelm City Park temporarily, if not um, for a longer period. But it is, the city of Yelm is moving forward with us now. We are, we have moved. Most of them, most of the bricks over, are they being restored still?
Bricks are being restored. The monument has been moved over already.
The monument's been over, it's been brought over and it's going to be in the corner next to the um, James Longmire Monument, which is in the corner by the where the, how would you, on the fun time side, um.
Closer to Tim's Pharmacy.
Yeah, closer to Tim's Pharmacy on that corner. Uh, is there any questions or anything on that? We will have, as Lynn mentioned earlier, um, a Veterans Day, or excuse me, Memorial Day ceremony. And um, it's, it's going to be done correctly and rightfully so. Other than that, I have nothing else. Um, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that's what I'm. I just want to share a little bit. You guys are amazing. I was so impressed with just the way you handled yourself, the answers and the curveballs I performed, my goodness. Um, but at the same time, so encouraged for quality people to apply. Uh, I, I, I'm sitting here thinking, man, I almost want to give up my seat to one of you, but the pace so high that I can't, um. But here's the thing, here's the thing, in, in two years, my seat is up. You know, so who's gonna, who's gonna run? And you know what I love doing is stacking the deck with people of quality. I don't think of having an opponent, I think of having somebody of, of great stature to whatever, hey, who you running against? I'm not running against anybody. We're running together for a good selection for Yelm. So please, if you don't get in on this round, get in on the next round in two years, put your name up with mine. I would be so happy to lose an election to one of you. Here's the thing though, when the city gets who they vote for, we don't lose, we win. All right?
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you so much, Lynn. Speech, sir. Um, I'm not a politician. Okay. You're a fool. I, I do, I have a request you make, so uh, as you know, I'm a foster parent, I was listening in on a court case for the family. And their microphones are excellent, it was via Zoom. So can we improve our mics? Because I was watching a panel equation and it's hard to hear half of what's being said. Like, I have full blast, I'm straining and um, it's, it's hard to hear in this room, so can we look into maybe upgrading our mics and doing some, adding more or do something like that because that would be, be really nice.
We are working on upgrading the sound system audio here.
Josh is saying is the sound sucks.
It's, it could be better, could be better.
We are working on it. We should have more of an update. Um, I'm looking over this way, it's not any of that. Um, Jason's the one who, our IT director is the one that's working on that. He has a pretty full plate at the, at the moment. We are hiring for another um, IT employee. Um, but if you give us just a couple more months, we will be, um, it is on our radar and it's something that we are working on.
Okay. Are you in, sir?
Yeah, okay.
Um, I wanted to say that, uh, went to the Yelm's Farmers Market opening, it's doing really well. Uh, I am hoping that we can continue to see it grow. It has grown some more. Uh, we are looking for some more encouragement there. Uh, please be aware that uh, the community garden is something to also watch for. And uh, just the parks and everything, Director Colt, I appreciate all the work that you've been doing with the parks, they are looking really good. And I think we're going to have a really good season this year with all the activities and the maintenance going along. So, I appreciate that.
Just to highlight off that, um, being public service week, Cody has a lot of good folks that work these parts, um. I don't know if you want to give recognition to each of them that, that, that work each park, um, because all of our parks have someone, all of our parks have someone that maintains it like specifically. So they take a lot of pride in all of that. And I guess I don't want to mention all of them, but go, go ahead if you.
Yeah, I think, I think one thing that we do, and a lot of cities do, so it's not a new science, but we assign parks to individuals and so they take a lot of pride because it's their park. So we have Emily Menefee at Cochrane Park who does an amazing job and also manages our splash pad. Uh, Tony Reese and Tim McIsaac that manage the city park and do an amazing job if you've been to city park. Um, Jerry Dahlberg who manages Longmire Park and does a great job. Kim Thiel who does the dog park and all the trail access. Um, and then that, those are all our parks people and they just do an absolute amazing job. Make sure Toby Stevens, our leader, is always, always great and organized and everything. So it's just a great group of parks people and I remembered all the first and last names, so take that.
That's a good boss. I, I also know that one other thing, and I think this is something that we as council members can help advocate for and to help Director Colt down uh, with the Yelm Tenino Trail. I know that you're trying to get some parcels. I've heard the arguments, I've read the arguments uh, from the.
We got news, Louie. Are you off for a question?
You're welcome to.
Um, I really, I'm in council on this, but we did have an agreement with the, um, Thurston County. Um, the county commissioners have um, asked for their attorneys to um, go ahead and work with ours to go ahead and make a contract with us. So we will get transfer of full ownership of all of that trail. Um, so it is, it works and it'll be a council decision final, but um, but that has been negotiated and it looks like we are, we're going to keep control of the whole, whole trail up to the city limits.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that because it was going to become a nightmare of what we want to do and what
Yeah.
they, what their views were.
Yeah, so.
Well, my God, thank you.
Um, any news on the JBLM airshow? We can get to that this year.
Or for the, just, yeah, for like free tickets or access?
Well, we, we were allowed to go in their special tent that one year.
Well, you want some VIP access. Uh, it's a good question.
Oh, my God.
I'm sure we can figure something out, but um.
She was trying really hard not to say that, but.
Can you give me some tickets?
We will ask, we will ask during the tour and um, I think that'd be a good opportunity for them to say, tell us that or whatnot.
Thank you.
Stage passes.
Guys, again, thank you. I just was uh, curious if uh, if the council and the administration has thought anymore about the uh, the idea of our police cars being black and white?
I have not thought about that.
Okay.
Do you have a strong thought one way or the other?
I believe they should be. I believe it creates a uh, even a more awareness of their, of their presence. I think that uh, Lacy's went ahead and done it and she, and I'm sure you're aware of the county is as well.
They're pretty black.
You can just see from a far distance.
He can change the colors from black and white?
To black and white. No, like an actual black and white.
You're not black and white.
I'm looking at it right now, it's pretty black, pretty white.
You're talking, it's black with white letters. I'm talking about like the sheriff's, the, the deputy's car.
White and then black lettering.
No, 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 no. He wants to be able to see from far away, so when he's speeding.
Slow down, one Adam 12, you know, black, white overs. Black fenders and hood. To it and Lacy did as well, and I think the reason behind that, because it's, it creates more visibility. And visibility is uh, you know, a lot of, as I know you're aware.
I had so many blind me the other day and I saw them loud and clear. Well, I see that.
I think if you get the chief's perspective on it, when um, we do the council retreat, he'll give an update and presentation. And I think that'll be a good opportunity to chat with him, say, hey, what are your, what are your thoughts on it? He might have a totally different reason or answer and, you know, I, I kind of tend to let him, you know, those placing decisions on a uh, he gets uh, I mean, as any department head would want, um, they'd want input and all that sort of.
Come on, camouflage.
All right, one more else, we're good. All right, well, thank you all. Look forward to seeing you all next Tuesday meeting.
Oh, yes.
A good time.
I, I.
At the community center.
I only vote for people who are present. I just want to go.
I thought that was the rule.
All right, are we adjourned?
Sometimes people don't show up.
We're adjourned.